Workshop meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everyone this evening. Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Thomas will not be able to join us this evening. They had prior engagements. Before we begin, you have before you the agenda. We would ask that item number four would come off the consent item for discussion, and item number seven would be removed, and also item number nine under A1 and 2 be removed from the agenda this evening and moved to a future date.
So moved?
Is that because of the absences?
Yes. We want to, we would prefer that everyone would be here for those discussions. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Also, before you, you have three sets of meeting minutes. You have minutes for April 10th, 17th, regular workshop meeting minutes, and the regular council meeting minutes for April 17th as well. If there's no errors, omissions, or changes, we'll need a motion to adopt those.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. I guess before we begin, I guess we should congratulate all those that made it through the Republican primary last night. Actually, probably should thank anyone who puts their name in the hat. It's certainly not an easy thing to do, and it takes a lot of time and effort and impacts their families. So I want to thank all those that put their names in the hat and congratulate those who pushed through last evening. So just wanted to mention that before we begin. Richard, I'll turn it over to you, or to John.
Just a point of clarification. The motion included minutes and consent items except for four and seven. You said minutes. I just want to make sure that the--
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. All right, Richard?
Mayor Pro Tem members of council, if you don't mind, let's look at item four under the consent for a moment. This is a resolution authorizing the donation of a surplus vehicle, in this case, it's a fire vehicle, to Coastal Carolina Community College. As you are aware, the city works through Coastal Carolina for many of our training purposes. One of those has to do with training of fire personnel. It has been our practice over the years to not only have frontline trucks, but also a reserve pumper. It's also been our practice that as we buy a new frontline vehicle, that frontline vehicle moves down one slot to be the reserve, and the reserve truck is then sold at auction. Carolina contacted the mayor through letter, David Heatherly, I'm so used to the other name, as we know of the former president of the college, but David Heatherly has requested consideration to have that vehicle donated to the college so that it can be used in their training purposes. We do estimate the value of that vehicle at somewhere around $10,000 to $15,000. We would, however, recommend that because we benefit to the city of Jacksonville in that it will give the school its first actual apparatus that can be used for training purposes. Do you have questions regarding the proposal?
Any questions? And the reason we asked to take it off for discussion is to, you know, obviously make the public aware of what we're doing and the great partnership that we have between the city and the college, an effort to train young men and women to hopefully potentially work for the city in the future. So I thought it'd be good to do that. So any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the donation of the fire truck to the college.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One other minor item. While we will not put it into donation, and it's not in your resolution, we are going to ask the college that if at any point they surplus that equipment or determine they no longer need it, that they will agree through the letter that it will be returned to the city, and then the city will determine its disposition.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on your agenda is a presentation by the school board relative to temporary classroom space. It's not a surprise to anyone, especially not you as the elected officials, that Onslow County continues to grow, and that growth has a direct impact on schools. The presentation tonight is, of course, by the Assistant Superintendent Steve Myers, and also by Ryan King, your permitting and inspections director. It focuses on your UDO, that's our zoning code, your UDO requirements and limitations, and will talk about options we may want you to consider in moving forward. So gentlemen, I'll turn it over to y'all.
Thank you for the order. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. To kind of get started, back in 2012, we sat around this table with city council discussing some policy decisions for Unified Development Ordinance. And one of those items that was included was temporary use standards and specifically for temporary classroom standards. And we took the policies that was adopted, the policy that was adopted in 1999, that was the first temporary classroom policy that the school board presented to the city council, and had kind of been used over the years. We took that as our baseline for those temporary use standards. We talked about them here with city council, with representatives from the school system, and we codified that with our draft Unified Development Ordinance. And those standards made it into the adopted Unified Development Ordinance, and that is what staff uses today for temporary classroom requests. So that became effective back in July 1st, 2014. One item, or a major item, that has changed since that time period that Mr. Myers will go into a little bit greater detail with you in just a few moments is House Bill 13 and subsequently House Bill 90. This has kind of changed some of the dynamics that they are faced with as it relates to classroom size requirements, which ultimately is going to impact their need for classroom space, which in turn deals with temporary classrooms here in Onslow County. So earlier this year, the school system reached out to permitting staff, and specifically for the Carolina Forest and Belle Fork Elementary Schools, for requesting additional modular classrooms or relocatable classrooms is the correct terminology in the Unified Development Ordinance. And staff discovered that there's availability at one school, but there's not at the other. So this led to several discussions and meetings with city staff and representatives with the school system. We wanted to kind of have a refresher with you tonight and seek some direction. So to kind of bring everybody up to speed, what the current Unified Development Ordinance allows is for staff to approve relocatable classrooms for one to three years, and then beyond that, city council has to approve extensions. And that's basically the main framework, with the exception of there are some specific regulations that deal with aesthetics, location, and things of that nature that are also found within the code. And those are some of the issues that are creating some challenges with the more recent challenges established or basically created by House Bill 13 and 90. So the specific regulations that city staff applies when a request is made, that there has to be no other alternatives available at the school for accommodating classrooms. We can only approve up to six modular or relocatable classrooms on a campus. It's got to be behind the front and side walls of the principal buildings to the maximum extent practicable. They need to conform with the architecture of the permanent facilities to the maximum extent practicable. That's probably a pretty tough one in a lot of cases. The rooftop or wall-mounted equipment shall not be visible from the streets to the maximum extent practicable. That's pretty easy, and just turn the unit one way, flip it around the other way, and that's a pretty easy one to kind of deal with. And they need to maintain enough adequate parking for the schools, given the additional classrooms that are being provided. As kind of alluded to a second ago, staff can issue a permit for up to three years. Beyond that, city council can renew those permits for two years, provided that the following items are addressed: definitive plans for their removal and replacement with permanent construction, the funding request be taken through the Onslow County Board of Commissioners requesting funds, and then anything beyond five years, once again, still requires and is at the discretion of the city council. And then once there's no longer a need, the county has 60 days to remove the facilities. So to kind of go over some of the ones that we've been talking about and to kind of bring all the city council members up to speed on kind of what we're dealing with, this is an example of Carolina Forest Elementary. The ortho photos that you will see tonight are 2016 photos, and then the actual ground shots are actually 2018 photos, just so everybody's aware. So this is 11 units that Carolina Forest received in approval by city council via management report back in 2014. That was prior to the UDO ordinance going into effect. So it was under the old standards. This is taken from one of the main driveways along Carolina Forest Boulevard. You can see off to the left side there that they are visible, and this is taken from Ramsey Road. They are all uniform in color. They all look similar, maybe not with the block that's at the school or the color roof, but at least there is some uniformity. That's important because that's one of those design elements that we'll discuss a little further moving The next one, I believe this is the one that was the originator of the 1999 policy. You can see here, you've got three campuses. Currently, there's only modulators at the Carolina Forest, I'm sorry, the Jacksonville Commons Elementary School. One of the school expansions that have taken place over the last 20 years was actually a wing expansion. I believe that was either eight or 12 classrooms within the last 15 or so years. Here's an example of the Majors, once again, uniform in color. This is taken from the Jacksonville Commons Middle School soccer field, looking back towards Jacksonville Commons Elementary. That's my young'un right there in case anybody was--
I thought that was, looked like your wife's son.
So the next example is Parkwood Elementary School. There are several locations or temporary relocatable classrooms here. In fact, we have a double at this location here. There's two classrooms at that location. And here are some photos. That's the double unit there. Now, these are tucked in behind the building that's furthest away from the street. So this is way to the back of the campus, pretty much not visible at all from Northwoods Drive. Once again, uniform in color, not brick, obviously, as the main campus is, but they are uniform in color. So this is basically your view from Northwoods Drive. So you can see the two units right here on the left from the street. Belle Fork Elementary is another one of the campuses that there's a need to bring in, I believe, two pretty quickly, which the policy technically allows up to six. But since we're having this discussion, there's four here located at the rear of the campus. There is some visibility from Belle Fork Road, although it is to the rear. That's the wrong button. Northwoods Park Middle, this is another really good example. I mean, there's two of them. There's two that are pretty much outside, out of mind there. And this is one of the schools that Mr. Myers will show you as an expansion plan here in the next couple of years. Jacksonville High School, there's several throughout the campus. And sometimes they may look like a classroom, relocatable classroom, but it could be that it's a storage building. Northwoods Elementary, on the left-hand side, as you go down Henderson Drive, you can see the pod of relocatable classrooms. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Myers for his presentation, and then we will conclude this agenda item with next steps here in a few moments.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, what I'd like to do is just give you a quick rundown of some of the things that we're addressing right now. And as Ryan had mentioned, we ran into some state mandates over the last couple of years that have impacted the number of facilities we actually need in the county, not just the city, but the county in general. And to start out with, it all started out, and so what we'll talk about, we'll talk about the state mandated classroom sizes and stuff. I'm also going to let you know that how we go about looking at population growth and the school capacities that we have right now, because there's a lot of work that's put into that. And as you'll notice, I gave you each one of you a sheet. It got kind of large because there's a lot of information on that sheet. And I'll go through it just a little bit briefly with you so you can understand how it looks. But that's, it's a way to summarize probably about four or five months' worth of work going into figuring out where we need schools over the next 10 years. And then the other thing I like to talk about is our long-term construction needs. It's based off some of these charts that we're providing and showing you, and how the county and the Board of Education has worked together to create a funding formula so we can continue with building new schools going forward. About four years ago, three to four years ago, we didn't have this in place. I don't know if you remember or not, back in 2012, we had a bond referendum that didn't pass. Well, since then, the county and the Board of Education's worked closely and worked well together. And so now we're on a path of building a new school approximately every two years. Sometimes we can move it up depending on how well we do with the money that we spend on schools and also how much money's coming in back and forth. But we try to build schools, on average, about once every two years. This information, as I speak about it, is also something that's been provided to our Board of Education, and so the information's readily available, and that's also on our website as well. So we'll talk about the state mandated classrooms. As Ryan had mentioned, we have HB-13, we have HB-90, but it all began with HB-1030 back in 2016. The state legislators mandated a hard reduction in our classroom sizes for kindergarten through third grade. What that meant is kindergarten, you can have 18 students per classroom. First grade, you can have 16 students per classroom. Second and third grade, you can have 18 students, I mean, I apologize, I need to make a correction on that one, 17 students per classroom for second and third grade. Prior to this, what we were using was a number that was 20 students per classroom for kindergarten through third grade, and we could waiver up to three additional students per classroom. So we could go almost all the way up to 23 in certain instances. That's a big difference than what we looked at with HB-1030. That's about a 12% decrease in school capacity just with the state mandate. Well, in 2017, there was some realization in that process that we didn't have the capacity. I mean, there was schools that didn't have the capacity to do that, and so HB-13 allowed us to defer that, defer the class size mandates for one year. Okay, so we're basically, we're running 20 students per classroom this current fiscal HB-90 came around because we're running at the end of this year, and because there's still concerns about how quickly we can get classrooms in place, HB-90 came back around and allowed us to phase in the classroom size mandates over the next four years. So when we're looking at this, what you see is in school year 2018, 2019, which is next school year, we're still at the same 20 students per classroom for kindergarten through third grade. In 1920, kindergarten through third grade's going to go down to 19 classrooms, 19 students per classroom. 2021 goes down to 18. And then in school year 2021, 2022, that's when the full effect of HB-1030 goes into place, and that's where we have 18 students per classroom in the kindergarten. First grade, 16. Second and third grade is 17. And fourth and fifth grade, throughout the whole program, we always calculate 26 students per classroom. Why is this important? One of the things that's very important to understand about this is previously, we could actually have waivers where we said, okay, we've got 20 students in a classroom, but because Onslow County is a transitional community, we all times will see maybe a student come in one day, and which make it up to 21. Or another day it'll go down to 19 or 18. So we see this transition all the time. And so what impacts us with this new law is we can't exceed that hard number right there. So in 2021 and 2022, we can't exceed 18 students per classroom kindergarten. There is no waiver. In 2021, 2022, for first grade, it's 16. So why is that important? When I start looking at capacities, if you think about this, if I've got kindergarten, I've got 16 students in a kindergarten classroom. I've got 16 students in a first grade classroom, and I may have, let's say, 15 in second or third grade. Well, I'm under capacity when I'm looking at the total numbers for that school. I get one person, one student goes into first grade, I'm over capacity for the whole school. So it changes the way we have to look at things. So what we had to do, and we do this annually anyway, is we start looking at our out-of-capacity charts. And to do this, we work with NC State and with, and we call it ORED, Organizational Research and Educational Laboratory, and they come in and work with this, and they can tell us fairly accurately, within less than a half a percent, how many students are coming in the next year, in the next year. And they project it all the way out to 10 years. Now, what happens is, once you get past five years, the projection starts getting a little bit grayer, a little bit more vague, because it's five years out. A lot of things can happen in five years. But within the first five years, we're usually extremely accurate in our student population projections. In addition to that, we use certified planning facilitators from Smith Senate, and what they do is, we've actually canvassed every single classroom, every single space on every school, and identified what spaces can be used for classrooms and for other purposes. And so now that we have, we know how many classrooms we have, and we know how many students we have, we can create these out-of-capacity charts. And it just so happens, each of you have an out-of-capacity chart in front of you. And what you see with these charts, it's both sides. You've got one side that says operational capacity with no mobile classrooms. That's the one with the black headliner on top. I'll talk about this one a little bit, but this basically is a brick and mortar. This doesn't include mobile classrooms, okay? So if you go to the next side, and this is where we'll talk a little bit more about and give you a little bit more understanding how this works, is this includes all the mobile classrooms, and what you see on the left corner of it is you will actually see, in this corner right here, you'll actually see the schools that are out there. The next column is a specific school year, which is, for example, 2017, 18 is the first column you see. That's the capacity of that school for that school year. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what happens in 2018, 19, if you'll notice, they're pretty much, the capacities are pretty much the same, just because with HB-90, the rule that we just talked about, the state legislation that was just talked about, allowed us to keep that same student capacity next year as we have this year. But if you look at 2019, 2020, that column, you'll notice that our student capacities are decreasing for each school. If you start going over to the colored side of the chart, what you'll see again is this is based on each year. Well, in the year 2017, 2018, we first start looking at the colors right there, what you'll notice, what you'll notice is that's the student projection or the actual student population that we have at that given school for that year. And based on the student population, or the student population projection, and comparing it to the capacity, we can actually determine whether or not we're getting out of capacity or not. And we project this out for the next 10 years. I know this is a lot of information, and I apologize, but I just want, I just want to let you guys see it so you understand that there's a lot of work that's going into this, and it's not just looking at it, well, look what happened last year, we got to do something this year. What we try to do is we try to evaluate what's happening this year going forward for the next 10 years. So what you see when you're looking at the colors is, when you see green, that means that the student, I mean, that the capacity of that school is within, is under 95% capacity. So we don't have a problem with student capacity at that school. If you see yellow, that's 95% to 100% student capacity for that school. If you see orange, it's 105% to 110%. And if you see red, then we really need to address some situations because 110% are over. If you remember, I discussed real quickly that with the new state mandates, we can be over capacity just because one classroom or one grade level is over capacity. The other grade levels may be under capacity, but if one grade level goes over capacity, that means we have to, we have to shift and move classrooms around or make adjustments internally. And we can normally do that when the classroom capacity is between 95% and 100%, in the yellow. We can normally handle that. But once we reach 100%, we reach that, we reach that orange level, at that point in time, we're pretty much guaranteed that we're going to have a situation that's going to come up, but we have to address it because we're out of space and the state mandate says that we have to address it. We can't, we can't have waivers. Is there any questions on that so far?
What's the penalty?
The penalty, right now, the penalty is, we have to turn it in, and then I believe, and I have to go back and look at it in a little more detail, but I do believe that superintendent will be penalized as far as his remuneration is concerned going forward. So it's something that we have to address. Okay. How do we address it when we're over capacity? Well, there's a couple of things we can do. We can look at additional mobile classrooms, and that's one, that's one way. It costs money to do this. Relocation of pre-K classrooms. Sometimes we have schools that have pre-K in it. While we want to maintain the pre-K program within Onslow County schools, we may have to look at another school that has more capacity that we move the pre-K program over to. An example of this that just recently occurred was over at the old Richland's Primary School. We moved some classrooms over to Summer Seale for pre-K. We repurpose areas. In other words, if we have computer labs, media, art, music, multipurpose rooms, there's times that we'll actually have to eliminate those rooms for instructional, for those instructional programs and make them regular classrooms. What that may mean is you put an art teacher on a cart, or a music teacher on a cart, or you may not have computer labs. So these are things that we have to look at. Other options, maybe it's doubling up K-3 classrooms. In other words, you put one classroom, you may have two teachers in it, which is not an ideal situation. So if you can imagine a room about this size, all of a sudden, you've got 36 kids and you've got two teachers in there. So it gets very crowded, and it's not conducive to instructional purposes. Long-term solution, just based on a snapshot of this year, is we need four additional elementary schools to address the overcapacity that's currently ongoing. So when we look, we started looking at mobile classrooms, because that's the one area that we can look at and try to be as effective as possible, is these are the schools that you see for the elementary, that we're looking at having additional mobile classrooms going forward in Onslow County proper and also in Jacksonville. We're looking at Belle Fork Elementary, two classrooms for next year, two classrooms for the following year. We're not looking at doing any projections farther than that, even though we had projected it all the way out to 2021, 2022, because, like I say, we do want to see what the student, actual student population is before we start moving mobile classrooms in and addressing it. If it looks like it's following the same track that we're projecting, then we would ask that we put another mobile classroom in there. Carolina Forest is another one. Dixon Elementary School, which is, I know it's now-- Dixon Elementary School, which is, I know it's now part of Jacksonville, but we've been doing tons of work over there. We decreased it to a kindergarten through fourth grade instead of fifth grade. We moved fifth grade over into Dixon Middle School. They still got close to a hundred students last year coming in. It grew that quickly. So then all of a sudden, we moved fifth grade over to Dixon Middle School, we got, we got capacity, the school started up, we're out of capacity. So this is one of these whack-a-mole situations where we have to address it. And so what you're looking at for next year, we're looking at five mobile classrooms, which we've already got it funded, we've already funded for it and making plans for it, and that's one of the reasons why we're here. Nineteen-twenty, we're looking at fourteen classrooms, eight classrooms, sixteen, forty-three, so a total of forty-three mobile classrooms. There's a potential to address the middle, elementary school needs.
And that's countywide?
That's countywide.
And that's also in addition to whatever existing ones are there, correct?
That's correct. Well, and that, I say that in that situation, we will look at, when you look at it this way, currently, we have two hundred and twenty mobile classrooms in the county. Two hundred and one of them are already being used for instructional or office purposes. We have nineteen of them that are empty or can be used, repurposed. Okay? But of the nineteen, when you look at the charts, you see, well, wait a minute, I got four, four to six of those mobiles. I may not have, need the capacity this year, but next year, the year after that, I'm gonna need it. Why would I move that mobile classroom out of there, and then next year, move it back in? So there's about four to six mobiles that we don't wanna move, just because they're gonna be growing in the future, they're projected to grow in the future. So basically, we have thirteen to fifteen mobiles available for relocation. We have a demand for forty-three mobile classrooms right now. So what we're proposing, and this is what we brought to our board, is in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we would relocate nine of the existing mobiles that we have. There'd be going to Blue, Belfork Elementary, Carolina Forest Elementary, Dixon Elementary, Stateside Elementary, and Jacksonville Commons Middle. Commons Middle isn't affected by the mandates, but they're overcrowded. And so there's a point in time where we'd like to bring a couple of mobile classrooms in there for them as well. It's approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the move that we've already put into our current budget, and so we're in the process of trying to make this happen. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the next school year, we'll need fifteen additional mobile classrooms. And you can see it's similar schools, Belfork Elementary, Carolina Forest, Dixon Elementary, Stateside, Sandridge Elementary, Swansboro Elementary, and Swansboro Middle. We have five existing mobiles that we can still repurpose, even after last, even after removing the ones this year. That costs us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we have to purchase ten additional units for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've put that in our budget this year, and we've been, and we're providing that to the county commissioners as well. Okay? In two thousand twenty-one, additional thirteen units, they will all be new units, it'd be eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And then twenty-one, twenty-two, would be approximately one million dollars for sixteen additional units. Now, that being said, twenty-one, twenty-two is far enough out, and we also are looking at building some new schools, so that number may come down as we move forward. So anyway, we talked about, we talked about the green side. That was, and, and that was, that was the least painful side, okay? Capacity with mobiles. If you turn over to the other side, it's the red side, okay? That's, that's our brick and mortar capacity that we have right now. As you can see, we have a lot more red on that chart than we had, than we've had in, on the other, with the mobile classrooms. That's because, and it's using the same format, we've got capacity, needs, and then also the student projections. So when we look at that, what we see is, our highest elementary needs right now is Carolina Forest Elementary with brick and mortar, not including the, not including the mobile classrooms already in place, Dixon Elementary School, the Richlands area, the Southwest area, and Swansboro area. And they're prioritizing that situation right there. In two thousand twenty-one, we're looking at basically the same, same scenario where Dixon is gonna be the highest need, Carolina Forest would be the second need, Richlands area would be the third need going forward. One of the things that the twenty-one, twenty-two needs that we haven't talked about yet was, where there's potential of having a, a new elementary school in Catherine Lake coming in place, and also in, in Stump Sound, in the, in the Sneets Ferry area, put another elementary school there. So those numbers will decrease as we go forward. Even with the Carolina Forest Elementary, even, it's, it's a school of the city limits. By putting a, a school out in Catherine Lake area, what we actually be doing is, we'd be looking at a major school realignment, and we would be pulling some, some students out of Stateside, or out of Summersville, out of some of these areas also, which will allow us to bring some Carolina Forest students up into these other schools as well. So that would take some pressure off, off Carolina Forest as well. So when we did this, we, we, we worked with NC State ORED, and we came back and said, okay, here's, here's our numbers, they, they understand where our brick and mortar, brick and mortar shortages are, and we asked them, okay, tell us where the, where the, if we're gonna put two elementary schools in, where's the ideal location to put them right now, based on the needs and demands? And what they showed us was two areas, in Catherine Lake area, and in the Stump Sound area. By doing that, what we can do is, if we have one in the Catherine Lake area, we can actually start pulling in, pulling in students from different areas and relieving the pressure where needed. And also in the Stump Sound area, we can actually take some of the pressure off Southwest Elementary and, and cover some of these areas over in Holly Ridge as well. To do that, though, to build these schools requires money, and that's something that, as I mentioned, we work with the county quite a bit, and we're very grateful for what the county's done as far as providing some money, and it's, it was identified in the joint education funding policy that was established in two thousand fourteen. What they said is, over the next ten years, we're gonna build five schools, and plus, we're gonna do an addition for Northwoods Park Middle. Okay? And first school was Dixon Middle School, which is our, which was built and went into operation this year. Richlands Elementary, which is being built over at Steed Park, and that's going into operation in August, going, and then a new West Central Elementary, which was Catherine Lake, and then another one in Stump Sound, and then another Midwest school. That Midwest school is, we'll talk about in just a second, but that's gonna be another elementary school that we'd like to, we would like to consider for some additional relief, relief for Carolina Forest, Belfork, and, and some of the schools over in that area. So the joint education funding requirements, even though they said we could build five schools over the next ten years, and then every year, I mean, then we look at a ten-year event horizon, where we'd still continue building schools every two years. These were the first five that were identified. But the joint education funding requirements said that we need to review this annually, which we do with, with the board, and also with the county, and that all other solutions such as redistricting have been exhausted before we build new schools. What they're saying is, if you've got seats in one school, don't ask to build another school right next to it. Utilize the seats you have, and so we have to do student realignment or redistricting to make sure all the seats are being used before we actually spend taxpayers' money to build a new school. And that's what we have been doing. We, over the last four to five years, we've done several redistrictings, and we're trying to keep the load balance of the schools as equal as possible.
Steve, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Do you guys have any, I see the plans for new schools, but what about expansion of current schools that are using these mobile classrooms? Is there any planning for that? Because as we understand it, the General Assembly said that HB thirteen was a funded mandate, and that money was given for this planning. So my question is, I know you have new schools coming on, but I'm not sure that's gonna alleviate the pressure of the mobile offices within the city, some of the city schools. So is there any planning for permanent building facilities?
We, we, we look at it every year, and right now, we're trying to get the, based on where the student population is, and if there is room for expansion at some of the schools, we'll try to do it. I don't know if you remember, back in two thousand six and two thousand seven, we had that bond referendum. We, at that point in time, we took seven of the city schools, and we actually built them out. Northside High School was one where we added eight wings, and then we did multipurpose rooms and classrooms in Belfork, and so we did quite a bit back then. Also, the bats, the unfortunate side of that is, some of these schools are now built out, because we built so much into them already. So one of the things we had to look at, if we can, if we can add additional construction to a school, that's something that we wanna address. At the same time, if we can't, then we need to start looking at building a new school as well. So right here in the funding policy, I just showed the Exhibit A right there is, basically was just a timeline that they had initially looked at to build the schools. And you'll notice that same schools we had talked about, Richlands Elementary, we actually moved up a year, because we saved some money on the Dixon Middle School project, we saved money when we built it, and also with the, with the good stewardship and great timing for construction and stuff, we were able to get that done quickly, and so they said, we can bump that up a year early. So now we're going back to them and asking to build another school, and because we're still in, in a good position as far as how our school construction has, has been going forward, we're, we're within, within budget with our existing Richlands Elementary, we're asking them if they can actually not just give us one school this next time around, give us two schools. Okay? And they're, they're considering it at this point in time. So that's something that the Board of Education and, and the county commissioners are looking So when we talk, when we talk to our board, and relaying the information to our county commissioners as well, this is the new plan that we were looking at, because each year, we look at the plan and we adopt it. So in other words, if we need to look at doing additions, or instead of, I mean, construction additions to existing schools, or add schools, this is where we look at it every year, and we make adjustments as needed, where we can get the biggest impact. So example is, the new elementary school, Richlands Elementary, is under construction, and that was, that's gonna be completed by August. A new elementary school, because there's so much growth happening in the Dixon area, we decided we had to switch to Dixon and Catherine Lake, and that's supposed to be two thousand twenty-one. We're actually looking at requesting information from architects right now. And then there's a possibility that we can bump the Catherine Lake Elementary School up to two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two. That's something that the county commissioners and the Board of Education are, are discussing right now. We also are looking at middle school expansion at Northwoods Park Middle. I don't know if you remember, but I was mentioning something about Jacksonville Commons Middle needing some mobile classrooms. Well, this will, because it's growing over there, well, this will help offset that growth over in, in the, in the Commons area, and also in the Northwoods Park Middle area. And then also, then after that, we also wanted, we also know that we need another elementary school, not a middle school or a high school right now, but it looks like we're gonna need another elementary school, and that probably to address the overcrowding at Carolina Forest Elementary, Commons Elementary, and Belfork Elementary. And then two thousand twenty-seven is so far out, I don't wanna promise anything. Okay?
You've got enough to do.
Yeah, so at, at that point in time, we know we're gonna need another school, and we think it's gonna be another elementary school. When we build the schools, we're building them larger now, because we get more, it's, while it's, we like to see smaller elementary schools, we also know that if we build them correctly, we can add more capacity to an elementary school, and, and so we're looking at building them eight hundred students instead of six hundred students. So in summary, I know this has been a long conversation, but in summary, we see a strong growth in student population. We see growth, about three hundred students a year. Over the last forty, fifty years, you average it out, we're seeing student growth on average, about three hundred students per year. It's, it's almost like clockwork. And then, and our biggest growth is always with elementary schools. We've got the youngest demographic in, in the state. Well, that youngest demographic, that means that we have younger kids also, so when, a lot of times, the military, they, they transfer after they've reached an older age, and so we don't see as many of middle and high school students. The county gave us, worked with us to, for a joint education funding policy, so while we're not, we're behind, behind the eight ball right now, we're behind the scenes, what we're doing, though, is we're trying to catch up and trying to maintain right now where we're at, so we keep on going forward. So we're very grateful for the funding that's already been provided. And so that was, that was the presentation. I don't, if you have any questions? I know it's a long information, a lot of information, and I get chastised quite a bit for giving them too much information, so I apologize, but if you do have any questions afterwards, please feel free to ask. I mean-
Any questions?
Let me ask a couple. You know, number one, and Ryan, I know you're gonna cover some of this in the options. Explain to City Council, though, what the ask is. You know, you have, for example, at Carolina Forest, you currently have eleven portables. What's the technical name, Ryan?
Relocatable.
Relocatable classrooms.
Classrooms.
Okay. So we'll call them-
We can change that if you'd like.
We'll call them RCs, relocatable classrooms.
The kind term is learning cottages.
Learning cottages.
There you go.
So in the options, what Ryan is gonna show you is obviously options, but it's gonna talk about numbers. So Ryan, if you would.
Okay. So, given that the temporary classroom, relocatable classroom policy started with City Council back in nineteen ninety-nine, we wanted to come back to City Council, since it's part of the UDO, and seek direction. And the way that we see it, you know, the school's asking for certain things, and we just, we're not able to provide that at this time. So the options, as we see it, are leave it as it is, which obviously doesn't help the school system. The other would be to revise our Unified Development Ordinance. And revisions could include some of these or all of them. One option would be to eliminate the standards altogether and let the school system bring out as they see fit. Plan RME would not support that and provide that as a recommendation, because who knows what the future holds? However, we do believe in recommending that we look at that maximum number be adjusted, and maybe it's a two-part equation. Staff can do this. Anything above that, it would require City Council approval. That's one option. The three-year time period, and then after that, City Council, that would work. The problem is, after three years, they're supposed to be asking for funding, and they already have kind of a funding plan in place, but it's more than just to build schools here in Jacksonville, it's countywide. So I don't know that, the way that the school system's going through that, I don't know that the current policy kind of reflects the way that their overall planning processes work. Adjust the location, although I think that's a good scenario that we have now, behind the front wall, try to keep it tucked in behind, although there may be some placement challenges that that creates. That's one item that Mr. Myers and myself, we haven't really dove down into the weeds there, that's something we would wanna look at. The facade standards, they're probably not gonna look like the, the buildings there, but you have to at least tip your hats to the school system, they have made them look uniform, and I think that that's probably a pretty good standard, at least you don't have a red one, and a brown one, and a green one, and a white one, they at least have some uniform colors where they blend nicely. And, you and I talked about this one the other day, future request, I'm not even sure what that was, I didn't take it out of the slideshow. When I was putting it together, it meant something, I guess, but, so, you know, we just need kind of some, some of your thoughts and direction, so that we can prepare a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, if that's Council's pleasure, and get that before the Planning Board in June, and before you in June as well, so that that gives the school system the opportunity to bring those classrooms in place for the eighteen, nineteen school year. The two that I think are the most pressing right now would be Carolina Forest Elementary, which is already at eleven, so really, there's nothing we can do there.
What are they asking for there?
Two right now.
Two right now, potentially two next year as well.
And then Belfork Elementary currently has four, and I believe it was one or two that you're looking short-term, immediate needs. So just kind of wanted to get kind of the thoughts of City Council, so that we can draft something that, to bring forth, you know, to codify that.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Steve, good presentation.
One of the things that, and again, a good presentation, as the mayor pro tem said, in all of the planning work, you know, you've shown us new schools.
Yes, sir.
But we didn't see anything about expanding elementary schools, and I'll give you an example. You're, currently have eleven relocatable classrooms at Carolina Forest. You're gonna go to thirteen. So the first question I would have is, how many classrooms are normally in a wing?
I don't have that exact number at the top of my head, but when we, with Carolina Forest, we did in two thousand six, two thousand seven, add additional, eight additional classrooms to that, to that, to fully flesh out one wing that was still available for, for growth. And then, once, once we get, Carolina Forest right now is at a point right now where if we add additional wings, I mean- additional wings, I mean, classrooms into the wing, then we're actually, it's starting to get too far out and a lot of, and the core spaces aren't conducive to additional students in there. The temporaries, how do I, I know I'm sounding confusing, I apologize, but the temporaries are just, even though we don't move them as often as we want to or get rid of them as often as we want to, are there just for a temporary location, purpose. One of the things that we always have a concern about, we don't like temporaries either. We don't like learning colleges or relocatable classrooms either. But one of the things that we have to worry about is, the more we put in there, how does it impact the school itself? Because then you've got these core spaces, you've got your cafeteria, you've got your media center, you've got all these other locations that these students are using for the same services as the regular classrooms are. So when we talk about they're being built out, what happens is, the school is built out based on the core capacity it can hold. The temporary classrooms we're using right now are there, and it's not an ideal situation because we've actually, we've actually put in more students than the core capacity can hold. And so, we may have to do another lunch period, or we may have to do some other things there. So that's when we talk about schools being built out, what we have to look at is, what can the school actually hold? And if we try to build a new media center or cafeteria, then it kind of goes against the building. It's, I mean, it's something that the building wasn't built for originally, so it's going to take a lot of money to change that.
And the point I'm making is, you know, the city sells quality of life. And if you look at the city schools and you have all new schools and everybody's in a proper classroom, that's the reason why people live in the city in addition to the other services.
Yes, sir.
But if you look at the city elementary schools and pick a number, a third of the students are in portables or learning cottages. But you look down at Dixon and they have all brand-new elementary schools, where are families going to want to go? You know, they look at the grading of every school in the county. And I don't know the grading, I think it's 1 through 5 on stars or something like that. Well, if capacity and for other reasons, the elementary schools in the cities are threes, and up in Richlands or out in Southwest or down in Dixon, they're fives, people are not going to want to live in the city. So I think one of the things, I know you have a problem, but one of the things that as the manager of the city, I want to make sure that as we solve your problem, we have some guarantees that we're not going to wind up with people not wanting to live in the city because the elementary schools, I don't want my child going to school in a portable. It's just that simple. So I guess I come down to this. You're asking Council to give you some flexibility. What type guarantees can you give us that say, folks, you let us go to 13, and I will guarantee you, School Board will guarantee you, that by the year 2022, there'll be no portables out there at all and every student going to Carolina Forest will be in a proper classroom? I mean, it's, we have to protect the quality of life. And I know that it puts you all in a difficult position when you're not really able to tax. All of your money comes from decisions by other elected bodies. And when we place standards on you, you know, we are not, again, the School Board, we're the mayor and council, but we, or they are the mayor and council, and they're responsible for quality of life. So how can you, you know, what kind of comfort can you give to Council on this issue? I mean, Council, do you agree with the points I'm making or not?
I'll go ahead and lead it. Mike, first of all, I envy you guys because you have a very difficult job. We're in a military community, you have plus-ups and plus-downs, you know, in moments' notice. And you guys have a hard job to do. But that's what my initial question was. I mean, I have no problem issuing the flexibility of the mobile. We want to educate our people and we want to have adequate facilities. But at what point is there a plan in place to say, that school is going to need to be expanded, rebuilt, torn down?
Additional school being put in place.
You know what I mean? There should be a plan to mitigate that impact of the mobile offices. Because if we allow 15 or 16 and we do these extensions, it could be an indefinite period of time. And like Richard said, it could be almost half the populations in a mobile classroom within the city. That has an impact on quality of life and the ability for us to retain retirees, families, you know, bring in more professional operations that look for quality of life and where their children will be going to school. That's a question that's asked more than anything. What kind of schools do you have? What do they look like? What kind of programs do they have? So it's just a concern for me personally. Have no problem supporting what the needs are, but I think as part of that, there should be a replacement plan within a period of time, whatever that may need to be. Because as I understand it, the General Assembly was very clear in saying that HB13 was a funded mandate, that money was given for the reduction of the classrooms, and it should be, I'm not saying that, you know, again, that's for a different conversation.
One of the things, too, Mayor Portem, if you don't mind, that funded mandate that they were talking about, you're right, it was a funded mandate. And what they were discussing at that point in time was, they were providing funds for teachers to, for 16, I mean, 16 students in classroom for first grade and the whole series right there. They were providing funding for it, but they weren't providing funding for additional
Facilities.
Facilities. Okay, so the personnel, the personnel they were funding for, but in that process of funding for the personnel, well, they may have said, okay, we're going to have 16 students in first grade, I mean, one teacher for every 16 students, first grade, and went through and got, and the numbers were all there. What they didn't do at that point in time until 2016 was, they didn't go in and say, well, you have to spend exactly for that classroom right there. They said, here's the funding for it. And by the way, you can use this also for your other enhanced classroom teachers as well. So you may get 16 right there, but the class size was 20, so you could actually work it out. So you could have an art teacher, you could have something else that wasn't funded. So what, in that process, what would happen was, they provided funding for specific core instructional classrooms and gave us the flexibility to increase the classroom sizes so we could have art teachers and music teachers and some of these other enhanced teachers that weren't available through state funding. In 2016, that changed. And they said, no, you have to spend, for that teacher, for that first grade or second grade or third grade, to meet those class size requirements. Which is fine, because the school system would rather have smaller classrooms anyway. I mean, we appreciate that idea and we accept that idea and ready to move forward with it. The problem was, is, in a situation like in Oslo County, we've always been behind the eight ball as far as construction is concerned. We were always, we were always overcapacity in this process. And so, when this changed, that added another 12% capacity requirements in elementary schools that we didn't have. And the funding, and the funding wasn't there from the state for that process. Now, I know that the state's been talking potentially about putting a bond referendum out for new capital construction, but that hasn't happened yet.
Right.
And so, we're looking at that. So when we're talking about funding, they were there for the personnel and for the programs, but it wasn't there for the facilities. One of the things, too, Mr. Woodruff, Dr. Woodruff, in this process, and I understand where you're coming with, okay, we need to have newer schools in, or new facility, or better, or nice facilities in the city as well. And we do too. We would like to do that as well. We'd like to do that for all the county. And, for example, I think in the last 20 years, we've probably had about three, about three schools in the city, and then we've done about seven additional construction upgrades to several of the schools too. The problem that we have is that we don't build based on, okay, this is a, this is a location that would be nice to have a new school and stuff and help out. All we do is, we have to look at where the greatest demand is at any given time. And when I look at that, when I look at the charts, I have to say, well, I've got to cherry pick this point right here. And it has nothing to do with, well, is this a better place or a better location or not? It's just, what's best for the kids at the point in time. So when I'm looking at putting a school in, for example, we did Richlands Elementary, that school was built in 1926.
Yeah.
And it was overcapacity and stuff. We couldn't, it wouldn't handle all the capacity, so we had to build a school there. Dixon Middle School, built in 1928, and it was, it was on its last legs as well. We had to do something there. In 2023, I believe in our plan is, I want, that we've presented to the Board, and while the Board has to make the decisions with the county commissioners, and I can't speak for the Board without, without their blessing. But in 2023, we presented to the Board that we would like to see a new school that would take care of the capacity issues in the Carolina Forest area, the blue, I mean, Bell Fork area, and also in the, just a second.
Jacksonville Commons.
Jacksonville Commons Elementary area. So we are looking at that too, and that's what we've presented to our Board, saying we would like to address those areas with another school as well. Because the schools are built out, I mean, the core capacity at these schools are built out. And so, what we'd like to do is build a new school to address those issues for those three schools.
What I'm concerned about would be, we allow you to have the two, two more classrooms. 2023 rolls around and guess what? We've still got 13 mobile classrooms at Carolina Forest. I would be willing to extend mobile capacity here if we had assurances or commitment that they would be removed at a certain date based on a build-out. For example, Glenn, go back to that last, last picture overhead. I'm assuming that if you're willing to put 13 mobile classrooms in a, at Carolina Forest, that, that you already have the capacity for cafeteria, so you could, you could potentially put a building classroom wing there because you already have the services. Is that a fair statement to support those, that student population?
The way we're addressing it right now with the mobile classrooms is, we actually have to add additional lunch periods, and we actually create additional restraints on the school as far as the instructional programs are right now. It's not an ideal situation. We don't want, we don't like the mobile classrooms either. So what you're seeing there is...
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, if you were, you've got 11 there now, so I'm assuming you've already got the core programs in place, you've already got your lunch schedule.
Right.
I don't know whether two would be enough to kick you over. I guess it would depend on how, how much flexibility you had. But, but I guess my comment is, I don't want to just allow, give you a blank approval and say, yeah, two more classrooms can come in, and without some assurance that the overcrowding will be relieved at some point in the future. However, we can work that out.
And that's one of the things that we've been talking with our Board of Education as well, because we do know that this area is a concern. And the other thing, and Carolina Forest is one, one part of the puzzle. When we do the, when we look at an elementary school over in the Catherine Lake area, remember, we are going to be moving, doing some realigning, so we will be also relieving some of the pressure on Carolina Forest as we move forward.
You know, if we allow the, again, the extra capacity, you know, we, I would want to have some assurance that either, either the mobiles will be taken away at some point or a classroom, new classroom wing would be added to make a permanent facility. Just, just something to where we know that we're addressing the overcrowding and that we're not, the city isn't just a dumping ground for the mobiles.
It's, as I mentioned before, we have about 220 mobiles. 201 of them are being used for instructional purposes right now. Of that, about 58 of them, 58 of the mobiles are in the city. The county is, has their fair share of mobile classrooms as well. I think everybody's sharing the love in this process. I mean...
You know, one of the reasons why this, why we put the process in was, this was prior to the county and the Board of Education having a funding program. But, but we wanted to make sure that our county commissioners and we're aware that they had a responsibility to fund, fund programs, fund construction. And we didn't want to continue to just have a situation where we just allowed the mobile units to continue to build and build and build, so.
Right. And I understand.
Comments, Chair?
No, I do not.
All right. Any questions? Okay, Angela?
Mr. Myers, is there a state law that talks about constructions of schools, particularly at elementary? Are schools allowed to build up or it's just wide?
Schools can be built up or, or single-story or double-story. Traditionally, we tend to want to keep elementary schools at single-story level. It's easier for the kids to go up and down the stairs and at that age level. Middle schools and high schools, we are, we tend to look at both directions with two-story or one-story, depending on the location and land available.
Steven?
I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
I was about to say, is, has there been, or are you privy, is there more conversation possibly about increasing year-round schooling to help alleviate populations in schools, particularly if you have like two or three tracks that there will be always at a certain point in a given school year, that there will be a certain amount of students not in school because they're on a particular track?
There's, I mean, there's, there has been discussions, I know in some school districts, for example, Wake County, that they do have wave year-round schools. We've looked at it some, we have some year-round schools, but we don't have them in a wave situation. One of the things that, in my area, working with operations and facilities, one of the things I have to be concerned about too, is how do you maintain these schools when they're continually in session? Because we can't address a lot of the things that have to be taken care of too. So we need these three-week breaks periodically in this process. One of the things too, I just brought up the slide again too, just to make sure that we're aware of it. I mean, we do know that Carolina Forest and Commons Elementary, Bell Fork Elementary have capacity constraints. We do want to put a school to address that. And that's one of the things that we brought to our Board of Education. I can't, I can't say that, but you know it's down the road. So one of the things that has to happen is, every year we look at it, if it needs to be bumped up, then we'll bump it up. If it looks like something else happens within the county, we may have to change that again. But we do have it, we do have it on the radar, and we just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. The other thing I would like to mention as far as elementary schools and the capacities and do we, do we build up, build out with elementary schools? One of the things we have to be concerned about is the quality of education that we're providing our children as well. We don't like mobile classrooms, and if we start building them out, where we go to 1,000, 1,200, 1,400 students in an elementary school, that's a hard, that's a hard environment for an elementary student. So what we want to do is try to keep them between 600 and 800, 850 students.
Well, even that is a hard number.
That's a hard number.
I know in, in planning in South Florida, we really tried to have elementary schools in the 450 range.
Before 2014, we were looking at the 650 range is, is what we were looking at. And that's where you see Bell Fork Elementary and a lot of the schools, we're in that, we're in that range. Now, Carolina Forest, we have close to 1,000 students in there already. And so, we don't like having that many students and we want, we got, we have to address it. But then, we have, in Dixon, in the Dixon area, we have 1,050 students or 1,100 students right now, and that's just kindergarten through fourth grade. So that's another area that's even worse often. It's growing, it's growing exponentially, while we see some growth, but it's limited growth in these areas.
So Ryan, right now, currently, the ones that you've showed us, are they on extensions?
It's a little bit cloudy, to be honest with you.
Well, let's get it on the table so we can make a decision.
Well, I went back and looked at the history. In 2005, there was some language that councils around about holding the time period within abeyance. Yet, Park and Associates came in with '09 with five schools requesting another extension, which takes us to, I think, the 2014 time period. That's the time that we adopted the UDO. And then, nothing's kind of happened other than the Carolina Forest Elementary School.
I think that, let me clarify the answer a little bit. The standards that are currently in place, many of the mobile classrooms are grandfathered in because they were there before that standard was established. Would you agree with that?
I would agree.
Okay. So, your request tonight is, is to give you options on bringing back to us for approval, modifications of the UDO?
Well, let's just go to the options real quick, and I think we can make it pretty simple. The first option is no change. And I think you can see, the problem with no change is, it...
And I think you can see the problem with no change is it just, it is not realistic given what the school board is facing. But I'll, I'll just ask, if you don't mind, anybody in favor of no change and holding the line? And that means the school board has to find other solutions.
Anybody in favor of that? I didn't think so. So go ahead.
Okay. The second one is to totally eliminate the standards and let council, I mean, let the school board do whatever they have to do for as long as they have to do it.
I couldn't support that.
No. Okay. Then I think the rest is for, uh, you know, for us to look as a staff at adjusting the number, adjust the duration. Uh, I don't think we want to adjust the location because we don't want these, these units out in front of a school like Carolina Forest. Uh, I think the facade standards probably need to be adjusted, but still need to hold the line on uniformity and so forth.
Which they're already doing now.
But are you as a, as a, uh, you as a city council comfortable with us looking at adjusting the number and the duration? And we'll take those things through Planning Commission and back to you and we'll keep you informed.
Yep.
That, uh, that num, that year that was on the funding, was that the year they were being opened or the year that they were being funded?
Year that they would be opened.
Opened.
So 2025.
2025 and we would, we would start construction or design probably 2022.
Got it.
Let me mention one other thing, and, and I'm not speaking for the city council, just as you said, you don't speak for the school board. Although you do speak very well, Steve. I appreciate that. The city owns 16 acres of land in Williamsburg Plantain, in Williamsburg Plantation. Staff is aware and others are certainly becoming aware that growth is coming back to that general intersection of Gum Branch and Western. And we are currently talking to two different developers who could bring 500 residential units online within the next five years at the, generally in that intersection. If the city council was willing to, uh, provide land there in Williamsburg, I guess what I'm saying is I would like to open with the city council's approval a discussion of building a new elementary school there in Williamsburg. I mean, I understand you're, you're responsible for the whole county. We are responsible for building the quality of life in the city. And Carolina Forest is not that far away from the Commons. Carolina Forest is not that far away from Williamsburg, which is not that far away from a lot of other areas. So, uh, you know, I would like to have the city council not authorize that tonight. But think about, and we will give you more information. But I would really like to enter a discussion with you about if a land somehow became available, would the school system, to help solve this problem of portables, uh, be willing to consider a new school in Williamsburg?
That's something I would, I would like to have a conversation with. And then also at that point in time, bring it to the Board of Education, which then would follow into the board, to the county commissioners. But yes, I, I don't see any problem with having that conversation. Now 16 acres is going to be a small school, just, just to let you know. Um, usually the way it works with this is it's, you need 10 acres per, 10 acres for a school. And for every 100 students, you add another acre. So 16 acres and then, then you got in, then recently with all the traffic and the queuing because the kiss and drops going on, it takes a little bit more space than that. So you're probably talking about 400 to 500 student school by the time you-
Good conversation to have though, to see if there's any opportunities. Sure.
Any objections?
I need to point out that that land was given to the city as recreational land and has restrictions on it for recreational purposes. However, the council in the past has sold land that as long as you take that, the funds of, and you apply it to recreational purposes in the general area. So again, this is possible to discuss it, but I did want to point that out. It's not just a land that's-
Or it could be like in Carolina Forest, there could be a, a partnership between the city and the county.
So in clarity, you're going to bring back to us some, uh, recommendations regarding the, uh, duration and the other items that we, uh, talked about.
I think for, if I may, there's two kind of items of clarity that I would like you to kind of give me direction on. And that is, is there a maximum number that you want staff to have approval on? And anything beyond that, it would require council action? Do you want it all to be council action? And then same thing with the duration, for how long can staff do this? And anything beyond that requires city council and, you know?
Comments?
Currently, the policy is at six. And then that's, we're, we're stuck at six. So even if we leave six, anything beyond six, maybe that requires city council approval. And then the three years, I'd like to tweak the duration to where, you know, staff can do it for three years. Anything beyond that would require city council.
But even the six will have a duration.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
We'll work on those guidelines and bring it back to you.
Okay. Any other comments? Steve, thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation. It was very good.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Okay.
Okay, we're back in session. Please continue to eat, but we're going to continue the presentations. Richard, back to you.
As we begin the budget discussion this evening, we would like to go back to a department issue for human resources. This is a new document relative, or a new software package relative to some human resource files. I'd like to ask Human Resources Director Ms. Williams to go through this request.
Kimberly?
Thank you, sir. So interestingly, we were just talking about schools and education, and certainly education doesn't stop when you graduate from either high school or college or in any other educational institution as a matter of point. So we want to talk about continual learning. It is important to us to continue to develop the skill sets of our employees. And HR is responsible for coordinating, for executing, and tracking training for all of the City of Jacksonville employees. And what we'd like to do is to have a comprehensive system to do that. We do not have that right now. So we would like a comprehensive system that allows us to assign specific training, to track progress, to score results, and then also provide reports for compliance. So for example, imagine after a performance evaluation, we identify certain training needs. We're able to provide those to the individuals. We give them a year to complete, and we can track their progress through that. We're not in a situation right now where we can do that. So that comprehensive program is important to us. They can schedule and register and attend, and we can track all the results. The other piece that's important to us is to have diverse content. We want to make sure that we're able to do courses online, classroom courses, and then really customize our own courses. Many of our departments want to be able to webex or video a training kind of example and then be able to use it for other shifts so that we don't have to bring employees. So really, it's much more economical. The other thing we're looking at in a system, we have not yet identified a system. We are looking at several. We want a system that has a robust course library. So we're looking at a system that would have safety courses like driver safety and active shooter training, a wellness component around nutrition. Also, the core competencies are important to us, like effective communication or supervisory training, valuing diversity, ethics and integrity. Compliance courses are incredibly important. You see that we do that now. We have sexual harassment training every year, workplace violence. We have to track that right now manually. So that can be arduous. We want to make sure that we're on an online system. And then we're also looking at career development courses. These are typically what you would think of as technical courses like Word or Outlook or Excel. So in order, when we looked at this system, or getting a system that would work with what we currently have in place here, and again, this would be for the entire organization, we believe that we can get that at around the $20,000 range. So we are hoping that this initiative will be looked at by council in order to help us move forward with continuing to grow the skill sets of our employees.
So this is an ask for the budget?
Correct. And we're not asking you all to say yes or no. As we've been doing, we let the department heads come and tell you some of the things that they have requested. The other part that I would mention, while the estimate is $20,000, that would be spread between the various funds. It's not a $20,000 responsibility of the general fund only.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, would there be an annual maintenance support?
More than likely.
More than likely. But we believe that what we currently have in place that we use, we've got kind of sporadic things we do. We bite off a little bit of this training. We bite off a little bit of this skill testing. We think we'll have enough within our budget to maintain the system annually. What we're looking at is that one-time cost up front and then annually.
Is this a package program?
We're looking at several different programs, and I want to be careful not to say one in particular, only because what we're hoping to do is bring together a cross-functional team, so all the different departments across the city that say, yeah, that'll work for me, that looks great. So I don't want to predetermine what we have. We have looked at a couple products. One in particular is part of what we have now with our NeoGov system, our applicant management system. So it would allow us to track training from the minute someone actually accepts the position. We could set up training that they're required to do that first year and then throughout the whole employment cycle.
Mr. Bidner, the answer to your question is yes. It is not going to be a program that we design. We want something that we can buy off the shelf and something that will then be maintained with, as you can appreciate, periodic updates from that vendor.
What's the track record on the packages you're looking at?
The track record on the, okay, so...
Where else has it been used that you can talk to the users and find out how pleased or unpleasant they are with it?
That's a great question, actually. We're looking at a product that was just purchased by NeoGov. So there are some local governments that have been using the products, and we've gotten them as examples to call. We're looking, actually, one of the products, we're doing a webinar on tomorrow to take a look at. So we're not in a decision-making mode right now. We're saying, we want to purchase something. We want to purchase it over the next couple months, but we haven't seen everything that's available yet.
But we would have, we will find out the track record, because you're certainly correct. We do not want to buy something that others are telling to us, they used it for two years and it didn't work.
I have a question in regards to, as part of this, part of the implementation of this. Are you going to set certain matrices of how you're going to implement education within the, you've got obviously required training. Is there going to be other expectations for training within other departments, be in core competency courses, or is it just going to be whoever wants to do it?
Actually, it's going to be a combination this way. Let me give you an example. We are developing career paths for many of our departments. Water plant being an example. We don't want a person just to be at a certain level certification. We want them all to get to the highest certification. So in those cases, we've created career paths that will say to move from here to here, here's the course that you need. Others, for example, and certainly I'm not the one to talk about these software packages, but let's say you want to have training on Excel spreadsheet. That would strictly be voluntary. Am I ever going to take that? I hope not. But maybe Pam in our office would say, yeah, I now need to have that. That would be a voluntary thing. But this software package would then track the fact that in her credentials, she now has that. Currently, what we do is we either don't record it at all, or we record it on a piece of paper, and you're lucky if you see it in her personnel sleeve.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
That was answered just now.
Is there a requirement to integrate with our current HR package that we have with the citywide?
Yes, we don't want it to stand alone. We want it to be able, we want people, we want their, we want to be able to track training through the employment cycle, which means it would have to speak to that. Right now, just to answer your question, we do offer training, and we do offer effective communication skills, and we'll have a trainer come in. We're not able to, one, register for that course. So if we can see 20 people, it's basically calling to put your name on a list. We want to be able to identify who really should be in that course and only offer it to those individuals at a given time. So it needs to be in electronic format. And then we need to be able to track that, and then track the success of the course to see if we want to offer it again. Right now, we're not able to do that, so we're piecemealing it.
Thank you.
And it would have to integrate with our current system.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
If we can, Police Department. Thank you for that courtesy, since she has another meeting.
Yes, it's item number B, Public Safety Police Division requests for additional employees. Right?
I think you're all aware of Chief Yanera, and you're obviously know Captain Weaver, and they're going to talk with you about the potential additional employees in their department. I believe, Captain Weaver, you're going to make the presentation.
I am. Good evening, Council. Good evening. Mayor Portman, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight about this request from the Police Department. Obviously, it's always a challenge to identify needs versus wants versus necessity. So we've tried to do our best at that, and we do each year take a look at manpower, where we're sitting currently. This is just a representation of, to give you an idea of where our sworn staff and our non-sworn staff sit within the department, whether they're in an administrative division, our communications, investigations, property management, patrol, field services, and records. There's a little bit of sworn and non-sworn in almost every position. We've tried to identify over the years positions that don't require someone to have a sworn capabilities. Best example would be our two civilians that work within our property management division. We've identified tasks that don't require someone to hold a badge and carry a gun for those positions. So we've tried to, over the years, minimize the need for such certified positions.
In the last 14 years, we've moved 12 positions from administration and support services back onto patrol. So we've done that over that period of time where we've, because of attrition and other things. So we've been able to move those folks back onto the patrol, in the patrol division or in field services.
And that's come through realignment, eliminating where we could even supervisory positions.
Could you explain what field services are?
So our field services are almost anything that's not investigations and patrol. So our SROs, our traffic division, community officers, all the necessity things that need to happen, but they're not a patrol function.
Got you.
And this is just a representation of kind of, from 2000 to 2010, we did a good job of expanding the department and moving us in alignment with population and work demand growth. But since about 2010, we have been where we are. While, and we'll get to the next slide, population, obviously, around us, within the city and around Onslow County, this is just within the city. Over the years, the first three are obviously your 10-year census numbers and then the state evaluation.
And we have gotten some personnel. We have, we got one officer, and then we got the crisis counselor. So we've gotten some other resources in order to meet some of those needs. So it's, even though we haven't gotten sworn officers in the last several years, we have gotten some resources that have helped us, helped us maintain our mission.
But you have gotten patrol officers through the cops grants.
Yeah, back in 2010.
And those came into the city budget after a period of, what, three or four years, where the city then picked up that responsibility?
It was 13, 2013.
I believe it was phased in over 13 and then 14.
Actually, I can tell you what year it was.
That's okay. In the interest of time, let's move ahead, please.
It was 2009.
Oh, nice.
No, you didn't move it into the city budget. You may have gotten them in that time period.
That's when we got them.
But they went into the city budget.
In 2012.
So just to give a quick representation of, to give the example of what we deal with in the city is, and is with all city services. It's not just city residents that we encounter and that we provide services to. The City of Jacksonville is the business hub for the county. Anyone traveling through, traveling to the base, from base to base, does come through the city, and we provide services to them. This shows you last year, our motor vehicle crashes that we worked, and it gives you an idea of how many are actual city residents and how many were either base or county residents or outside city jurisdiction. And same thing with arrests. How many are city residents that we've actually arrested in the last year versus those that come into the city to commit crime that we have to address. So as more people come into the city and do business, as more people travel through the city, as the population grows around the city, it impacts our calls for service. And I'll go ahead and give you kind of the overview of the way we track calls for service. We have three different types of calls for service. We do citizen-initiated, where obviously a citizen calls in, either administrative line or 911. We do self-initiated, where the officer does a traffic stop or pulls up and someone flags them down. The officer is the one that initiates the call. And then we have administrative calls. Some of those administrative calls, we can qualify as unobligated time. So like meal breaks, they're coming to the station to drop off paperwork. While they're logged off on the computer, they're still available for a call. But there are other administrative calls that are obligated, so court, training, things like that. So from 16 to 17, let's see, we had a 15 percent, oops, my apologies, increase in the overall calls for service. And we'll get to the breakdown of citizen-initiated in a moment, but most of this increase was actually in citizen-initiated calls for service. There was actually a 46 percent increase in citizen-initiated. And just to show you, while calls for service do go up and down, as with anything else, overall, the trend is we are continuing upward. And here's our citizen-initiated calls for service. As I said, 46 percent increase. This is, can be seen in two views, a good and bad. Obviously, citizen calls, crime increase, we actually had a 10 percent increase in reportable crime. But it also means that citizens trust the Police Department to respond. They're getting the message of, if you see something, say something, call, and allow the proper authorities to handle the issue instead of dealing with it yourself. So it can be taken in two veins. So some of the other things that we've seen in our citizen-initiated over the year with the mental health issue going on in our area and the nation overall, we've had a 106 percent increase in our crisis interventions over the last year. With that, 28 percent were attempt suicide calls that officers had to respond to. Another piece of that is with the opioid epidemic, with fentanyl and the different opioid derivatives out on the streets. We've had a 136 percent increase in our overdoses that we've seen within the city last year, 7 percent increase in drug-related cases overall. Sexual assaults in the last year have increased by 43 percent.
One thing I want to caution, though, because there are a lot of people watching this, we are a safe city. When you say 43 percent sexual assault call increase, you know, that's not that we were at 10,000 and we've gone up to 14,000 or something. I mean, let's be very cautious on using percentages of increases, please.
Correct. And this is also the calls. This is not, some were unfounded, some were trying to get back at a boyfriend or a girlfriend reporting it and then not being, but definitely not to take away from the actual sexual assaults that do occur. And I can go through and provide...
Sexual assaults went from 47 to 67.
Thank you.
So there were 20 additional reports. And then with diversifying what we do and in our area with all the different agencies that we work with, our assist other agencies have gone up by 178. And this can be NCIS, this can be ATF, FBI, Onslow County, probation, parole, EMS. There's a variety of different agencies that we do work with on a regular basis. And this is something that Chief can probably speak to a little bit more. Over the last five years in tracking and working with the CAC and our other partners with children, child victimizations, having a young population, having children, when we talk about child victimizations, this is, could be something as simple as a neglect. A new parent whose husband's deployed or wife is deployed and is left alone, has no support system to care for the child, and is just beyond their wits' end and just needs some services and assistance. So the other category we talked about was self-initiated calls for service. 4 percent overall, we increased last year. 44 percent of that, of our self-initiated increase, was in our holiday task force. With the growth that the city has seen, especially in our business district, Western Extension, the Gop Road Walmart, as the business areas grow during the holidays, we put extra officers out to keep people who are shopping within the city safe and protect their property while they're out. 28 percent increase in our school zone. Some of this is traffic control, absolutely, doing traffic control for kids in school crossing. But an additional piece of this is, has to do with the national school safety issues and officers actually being proactive in their zones and patrolling the areas while schools are either in session or as they're coming into session or getting out for the day, just to provide that extra sense of security and safety. And with the growth comes new highways. New highways comes traffic enforcement, traffic stops, traffic citations. A positive to take away is because of that traffic enforcement, we have seen a 5 percent decrease in overall traffic crashes within the city. And this is probably the best one to look at. Overall, last year, 31 percent decrease in traffic crashes that involved injuries or fatalities. So...
And we talk about proactive policing and the importance of proactive policing and how it reduces crime. Dr. Woodruff is right, we do live in a safe community. And I think the important part about self-initiated calls is, as self-initiated calls goes up, violent crime goes down because officers are more proactive. And so that's been our goal. That's why we focus on making sure that officers on patrol and getting as many officers on patrol. And in some of those units that are used for directed patrol and those kinds of things are extremely important in being able to reduce our crime rate.
So I'm going to take a graphical look at last year compared to 2016 to 17, just to see what the difference is in the actual calls for service, the citizen-initiated calls for service, our administrative time and our available patrol time. That's the time that officers are not on a call. They're not responding to something. It's the time that they can actually be out and doing those proactive patrols. One thing that we also did see between 16 and 17 was officers were spending 59 minutes on a call overall, which is about, you know, a good time because that is them getting all of the correct information, doing the initial investigation and providing services, referrals to services. Last year, we had more calls for service, so that time actually decreased. So we actually only spent about 52 minutes on each call. And this, we'll talk about in a little bit, but can have an impact going forward, especially when we start talking about use of force and de-escalation and the time that it takes to deal with those types of situations so that officers can de-escalate a situation and not have to use force. That, being able to spend that extra time on calls is absolutely necessary. And we have seen that from 14 to 17. We actually have had a 28 percent decrease in the use of force that we've had to use. And a lot of that has to do with the de-escalation techniques that the officers are now using, that we've done the training for, and our crisis intervention. Except for the brand-new officers that are just being sworn in and just getting out of training, all of our patrol officers have crisis intervention training. They are CAT trained. They are CIT trained.
The SROs and-
So as calls for service goes up, demand for service goes up, calls, population increase. And even social demands, this one kind of gets overlooked at times. From 2016 to 2017, we had, in 2016, 96 information-only reports. Last year, we had 516. This is where they're having a community dispute, it might not be a crime, but they want, a citizen wants something documented. And it's for their own protection, for their own safety, they just, that something's just not right with someone that they've seen or something that's happened. So they want it documented so in case something happens in the future, that there's something there. So, and especially with social media and those things that have, cyberbullying, all the technology increases, it increases our demand for services. So the issue with increasing time needed for calls for service, it reduces what we have available, use of force, de-escalation, it's very time-intensive, mental health calls, very time-intensive. The de-escalation requires additional training and longer training because you actually have to put officers into scenario-based situations so that they can make those choices in a training environment, so that when they're out on the street and yet in a high-stress environment, they can actually make those quicker and more effectively. Mental health, generally we'll take two officers. So where, previously, we were only sending one officer with CIT. We have one that handles the person, one that handles the environment. A lot of times, if someone's in mental health crisis, the things going on around them can set them off or control their behavior. So generally, one will tie to control anything from noise, making sure that the TV's off in the room, or making sure the family isn't around because they might escalate it, not knowing or not intentional, but, you know, having another officer to talk with them in a separate room so that the officer can help to de-escalate the person in crisis. Priority one calls, obviously, is number one for us. These are active, in-progress calls. Our violent crimes, as they're in progress, we have desired response time. And over the last year, or just this year so far, we've already seen our response times going up. A lot of that has to do with new officers taking the time to learn the area. We've had a lot of turnover. So having those new officers, it takes them a little time to get used to. If you've lived in Jacksonville all your life, you know how to get around without having to go down Western Boulevard. Brand-new officers, all they know is Western Boulevard, 17 and 24. So that takes time. Increased traffic in the area coming in and doing business slows response time. And then the increase in calls for service takes officers off availability. So the closest officer may be in, you know, three streets over, but they're already dealing with a different priority one, so you have to call an officer from the other side of the city at times. And then, of course, the opioid crisis, this impacts services daily. And this is, when we respond, the goal is not to take people to jail when dealing with opioid crisis or dealing with overdoses. The goal is to try to get them services, to try to get them assistance so substance users can stop using. Because it doesn't just impact them, it also impacts the family. So we don't only, don't just provide services to the substance user, we also provide it to their families and helping them understand and how to help them through it.
And part of that is the resources that you gave us with the crisis counselor and obviously the work that you all have been doing on the crisis center, opening the crisis center.
So some of the things that we look at when we are evaluating where we're at and where we need to be, one of the things that they've looked at is the 2014 Bureau of Justice statistics. The national average should be around, is around two, two and a half officers for every thousand citizens. City of Jacksonville is currently using the 70,001,45, the last census. We're at 1.7 officers per thousand. International Association of Chiefs of Police looks at having 40 percent obligated, 60 percent unobligated. This, we can vary a little bit, but this is the ideal in having that proactive time, having officers available so that if something does happen, they're right there and available for it. You don't have to pull them off of anything else.
So I think this is really about our future and where we're looking, what we're looking for and what we need to be looking at. You know, part of the challenge that we have is, when I told you about us realigning, we've kind of cut as many officers from our support services and administrative as we can. So we've been able to manage the growth that we've had over the last several years based upon those officers being reassigned. So I think when we start talking about what our challenges are, is that we have to look at what's happening in our community. And I think, you know, the threats that are facing us, the opioid crisis, when we talk about the increase in child abuse, when we talk about some of the things that is going on right now in our community, I think that these crimes become more complex. And when we talk about de-escalation, those are things that take some time and effort in order to resolve. And we're real proud of the fact that we reduced use of force by 28 percent. And I think that's a testament to the resources that we've had, that you've given us, and the fact that we've been really focused on training officers to de-escalate those situations. But I think as these tasks and as this time becomes more complex and takes us more time to resolve a lot of these situations, we're going to struggle to respond, especially in lieu of what the current services we provide. When you look at the services that we do provide, you know, we're spending more time with complainants, we're trying to be more responsive to those complainants, and that's taking officers off the street. You know, that model, 60 percent and 40 percent, 40 percent obligated times 60 percent, those are models, but I think the most important thing that we talk about is what we use those officers for. So the staffing questions really are, how many officers do you need? How those additional officers would be used? And how do we retain the officers that we have? Because I think those are the questions that, when we talk about balancing the resources that we have in trying to address the concerns in our community, I think these are the questions that we should be asking. So how many do we need? We can talk about the models and we can make some projections of it based on those models, but the more important question is, how can we use those officers? And we've made a conscious effort over the last 14 years to focus those on field assignments. And that includes our drug unit, that includes our patrol unit, that includes our criminal intelligence unit, trying to focus our folks on being proactive in the community. And I think any additional staffing that would be provided would focus on those areas because that's really where the service needs to be. That's really where they can really make a difference and really reduce crime. So when we talk about that, if we assign them to that, we will see outcomes. And what we do right now is, officers assigned to those areas are given crime data every day, and they focus their efforts where the crime occurs the most. And if we continue to do that, then we can actually have some significant reductions in crime. And that's really where we're focusing on. It's, you know, it really is a balance between what's absolutely necessary and what we can do over time to prepare for the future. And that's really why we're having this discussion now. I think it's important for us to talk about, you know, how we're going incrementally increase our resources to meet some of these challenges that we're going to have in the future. It's, you know, as our city grows and as our community grows. Because, you know, as you saw, about 50 percent of the crime is caught, is by people that don't live within the city limits. So, you know, as the county continues to grow, even though the city might not grow in population as much as the county, that's still going to have some significant impact on our community. As people come in to shop and visit folks and do all kinds of different things, then, you know, where the people are concentrated, crime does occur. So I think when we start talking about improving staffing levels, there are really three things that we have to look at. We have to look at the competitive pay, and we have to look at officer retention, and then we have to have officers available to respond. You know, when we talk about officer retention, one of the things is that our department has been operating over the last year or so at about 10 officers down. And that's not, you know, that's not unusual in law enforcement across the state. You know, I was talking to the police chief in Winston-Salem, there are 50 police officers down. So Charlotte is 250 police officers down. So there's a number of reasons for that, and we won't go into those, but I think officer retention is extremely important. So one of the things that we have to look at is, is how do we improve our staffing levels? And those are just some of those things because we have to have the officers to be able to respond to those calls. And we have to have officers that can be proactive in the community. If we're simply reactive and not being proactive, then, you know, I think I told the story several years ago about an officer that saw a suspicious vehicle at a drugstore within the city, went out and checked him out, made sure, you know, rams, made sure everything was, and the gentleman left here and went out into the county and robbed the drugstore outside the city limits. And I think that's real value when you talk about how to be proactive. And I think one of the things that we're starting to feel is that because we have all these demands on us, because there's increase in calls for service and demands for service, that we're starting to lose that ability to be as proactive as we'd like to be. And I think, you know, there's a number of things we can do. First is, you know, officer retention. We have to look at how we can retain those officers. When I talk about 10 officers down, we have five officers that are being trained right now, that had just graduated, actually, from the BLET program. And then we're about four or five officers down. So typically, that's the way we've been operating. And, you know, it takes us 42 weeks from the time that we start the hiring process to the time that we actually get an officer on the street where he can be in that car alone to have some impact. And that is part of our challenge as we move forward. And I think that's really part of our challenge when we talk about improving the staffing levels. Because like I said, I think impacting crime, there's a direct correlation to the proactive and the number of officers that are doing proactive work and significant reductions in crime. So that's the end of our presentation.
Yes, great presentation, Chief. Ashley.
This is not, I'm sorry, sir.
I'll open it for questions, I guess, and then we can-
Why six?
So we've identified, actually, 30. But knowing-
Never mind, you answered my question.
Knowing that we need to be fiscally responsible in that, 30 would be 3.25 million to put them on the street and get them going.
Is that all?
Much?
3.25 million. But six is 650,000. So we've identified trying to do this over a five-year period to try to be as fiscally responsible as we can and understanding the needs and the balance of the city and the city operation and the other services that the city provides with our needs.
But I think we've kind of opened this discussion about where we do need to be. Do we need to be at 30 officers? Do we need to be at 50 officers? Do we need to be at 20 officers? And I think the important part about this is, you know, we've got to look at our staffing levels. Six was based upon all those models. We had actually three models we looked at, and we based that 30 upon those three models. The first model is a 2.5. There's a lot of questions about whether that is valid or not because it's an average of all cities in the United States. The 60-40 model is based upon what the ICP has come up with as what you should have for obligated versus non-obligated time. And then the last model was based upon the calls, the number of calls, the number of self-initiated calls and the number of citizen-initiated calls. So based upon those three models, we came up with 30. We looked at a five-year period. Now, is that the right number? Again, if we go back to that, how are we going to use them? We're going to focus those on patrol. And how can we start to look at the impact that the growth is? Because when I really think about, I probably should ask Glenn to go back to that chart. When I really think about what we should be talking about as far as calls for service, we go back to that chart that shows... There's probably a better way of doing this, isn't there?
Glenn, check out it.
There we are. When we start to look at that, that's really what starts to worry me. It starts to worry me as that trend continues to grow. And I think we do today, I think we do okay managing. You know, we do have some challenges, and we do have some challenges with retaining officers. And if you were to ask me, you know, what the most important thing in the department is, is if we can retain some, the officers that we're losing right now, I think that's going to have a tremendous impact in these staffing levels. Because it's going to keep us from, you know, even if you gave us six officers today, we're talking about next year before those officers are actually effective on the street. If we can retain those officers, then we can be, they're effective today. And that's been our real challenge. And I think, and I don't think that we're alone in this. I think if you talk to any police chief across the country, or at most police chiefs across the country, you'll find that is the case. They're having struggles with finding qualified people, getting them adequately trained, and getting them on the street to actually do effective work.
Any other questions?
Chief, do you have a lot of issues with overtime right now or projected?
Yeah, we've struggled with trying to keep our overtime within our budget, and I think that's been a challenge for us. And, you know, special events and our holiday task force, all those are challenging as far as the overtime.
Thank you. We'll get you a report that actually shows their overtime over the last several years. But just very quickly, let me look at the draft budget.
I believe it's around 400,000.
410,000 is what we're asking. We went from 400,000, which we're going to be right at it, if not a little above it this year. And then next year, we're asking for 410,000 in overtime.
And that's what's in the base budget, but-
What would be more effective for you? Decreasing or increasing retention time or increasing mad bar?
I can tell you, right, if you're asking me that.
Yeah, yeah.
Retention. If we can keep the officers that we have, I think that's much more effective than adding to the patrol. I mean, obviously, we do need additional officers, but the most effective thing that we could do today is retain the officers that we have. Because like, again, 42 weeks is, you know, if you gave me six officers today, we're talking about this time next year before those officers. And really, you know, they're released, and then it takes an officer a full year really to get comfortable with his job. And so, you know, that takes some time. So if we can retain these officers, increase our retention of these officers, I think we'll go a long way to addressing this trend.
Is the issue still compensation for the most part? Is the issue still compensation for the most part?
I think the issue, I think the issue is compensation for the most part. And I, and I think, I think the other thing is, is because we're short, it puts stresses on the other officers. Because, you know, just like your question about overtime, it increases overtime, you know, officer doesn't get off on time, they're, they're answering calls, 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 they're not having time to, to do some of the proactive policing and engage the community like a lot of them like to do. So I think, I think that does, you know, being, being 10 officers short does put us at a, at a disadvantage when we talk about getting your time off, getting to training and those other things.
Well, police work isn't for everybody.
That's true.
I'm sure you lose something to that and the, certainly not, not an attractive feature in terms of working shifts either. So.
Any other questions? Richard?
On this matter, I think you've had some excellent information presented to you relative to compensation. That will be one of the items that we moved from tonight's agenda, since we don't have a full council, to next Tuesday night's agenda. We will be talking about compensation. I definitely agree with the two of them that retention is one of the things we need to pay attention to. The, the best departments are those departments that have a large stable of P2s and corporals. Six new employees are all P1s. And if what you have is a continued revolving door, you're going to have a department that's built upon P1s, not P2s and P3s. And Mr. Bittner is correct, police work is not for everyone. You will never eliminate turnover in the police department, or for that matter, in most jobs around the country. But if we focus on retaining those P2s and P3s, then they will be like a good pizza company. They will stay with you forever.
Forever. Thank you.
Wow. Wish I'd have said that.
Or a piece of bad pizza that stayed with you.
You can't say it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all, very well done.
Captain Weaver, great presentation.
If you'll pass the clicker down here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Very well done, folks. Thank you. I know the hour's late, but we have just a couple of other things we would like to spend a moment talking with you and I'm going to move down a little closer to you. Over the last week, we have been looking further at our health plan and the information that we're going to share tonight is, is not really good information. It's good information, but it's not happy information. The history on premium increases, you can see that in FY '14, '15, '16, we had no change in the premiums. We had planned changes and what you'll also recall is we had built up a little over million-dollar fund reserve in the health fund. And although we needed increases in '15 and '16, you agreed that what we should do is spend down the reserve rather than increase the premiums. I think that was a good decision then. I think it's a good decision looking back now. In '17, we had a $20 increase for all plans. This current budget we're in, we've increased the premiums 10%. And for '19, we're going to have to increase the premium 6%. Let me show you why. Here's your health plan. City contribution is almost 1.3, employee contribution is 1.2, total contribution's roughly one, uh, four and a half million. But look at the expenses. We had hoped that when we increased the premium 10% for this year, that we would be able to build the fund balance back up. Look what's happened. We've lost, and it could even be worse than this because we're only through, I mean, the data we're dealing with is only through April. We're projecting that we'll be in the red by $225,000, which means that instead of taking your fund balance, which was 481,000, and taking it up to 500,000 or 600,000, we're now down to 253,000 or possibly less. What will the 6% increase do? Towards the bottom, you'll notice medical net. It will put us in the black, we hope. Now, why do I say we hope? Just as gasoline is moving up and down the charts this week, you really have no guarantees when it comes to medical claims. This year, an employee can be totally healthy, next year, he can have a major issue. If we have a 6% increase, which is definitely what we're all recommending, everybody on the staff is looking, is recommending this, it needs to go into effect. We are asking you tonight, because we need to get into open enrollment, to give us the concurrence that we are going to have a 6% increase. Open enrollment needs to occur later this month and into early June. What that will do, we hope, will build that balance back up instead of at the end of this fiscal year at 253,801, it'll build it back up to over 500,000. Let's talk about who's going to pay for it. The city's going to pay for a lot of it and the employee's going to pay for some of it. This increase, and let's go back, you will notice a 6% increase. It actually takes the total contributions up by, I'm just going to say, $370,000 or so. The city general fund, including sanitation, because you remember, we do subsidize the sanitation fund, the general fund will have to kick in an additional 155,000. You can see what the other funds are going to put in. Total, you know, is there at the bottom. For employees, this is what a 6% looks like depending on your plan. So you can see, and I'll just pick out a typical one, employee with children currently, and let's go to the $1,750 deductible, that's the second column from the right, you will see their current premium every payday, so this is not every month, but every two weeks, their premium is going to go from $154 to $163. It's a $9 increase. You know, it is what it is. If you're at the $2,750 deductible, you can see, you can look at any of those numbers. Now, the number that is there, and again, I will use the employee, children, and under the 750, you'll notice the number eight. That means there are eight employees who are currently on that plan. So you can look across the board and you can primarily see from the most expensive one, family coverage with $2,750 deductible. There are 63 employees who are in that and their premium will go from 176 every two weeks to 186, a $10 increase. Now, bottom line is, the current budget, the base budget that we presented to you, is balanced by using fund balance from the general fund reserve. That's what we always do. This year, we're, the budget that you saw was actually 698,000 with change. So for, you know, Gail doesn't let me do math in public, so I round everything off. Basically, you're using 700,000 in fund balance. If you agree with the 6% increase, you're going to take that to 855,000 in use of your general fund reserves. Compared to previous years where we've used anywhere from 1.5 to 2.5 million, this is not an increase that I'm concerned about. It's obviously a use of your reserve.
But that doesn't.
We also have other issues.
Yeah.
But we've got other issues we haven't even talked, talked about yet. Yeah, and that's, that was going to be where I was headed. This is an issue I don't think that we have a choice on. Because at the end of the day, if the revenue isn't there to offset the expenditures, the plun, the, the fund, the health plan is not a valid plan. And it all falls on us anyway. This isn't Uncle Sam or Blue Cross Blue Shield making up the difference.
Doesn't make any difference.
What it does, though, is it tells you that as you look at the other items that we're going to be really focusing on next week, the rest of our items, you've seen all of the decision packages except compensation. And one other that I'll show you real quickly on boardwalk maintenance. You know, whatever you approve that's not in the base budget, it will come out of your fund reserve. But I have to tell you, as a manager, setting aside all other requests, this is one I do not believe you have a choice in. You can say to us, well, let's try a 3% increase. Okay, we can try it. The one nice thing about the premiums is we can change the premiums, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, during the year, if needed, or are we locked into this premium since it's our plan, Gail?
I think that we can probably change. Might need to give some notice in practical terms to the employees.
A couple of months before it becomes effective because of the notice that I have to go to Blue Cross, et cetera.
Yeah. But our recommendation on this one is a 6% increase goes into effect July 1. You can see the impact on your budget, on your fund reserve and on the employees.
Thank you.
Any thoughts or questions?
Questions? Motion?
Motion. So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
One item that was not on your agenda that I'm going to ask you to give me a little bit of liberty on since it technically wasn't on there. On Friday afternoon of this week, a citizen asked me to walk the boardwalks at Sturgeon City with them. Beautiful afternoon, had a great walk. Let me show you what I found, though. If you haven't walked these boardwalks, this is what we have down there. We've been replacing one board at a time. That is not going to work. So the decision package that I'm bringing to you, not asking you to vote on, but you will be asked a week from now to make some direction on each one of these. This boardwalk at Sturgeon City was installed in '03. It's gotten old. The total replacement cost down there is probably close to $300,000. We can't afford that. But what we have to do is start putting in specific money to start replacing major sections every year. So this department issue says, let's add $15,000 per year. We're not asking you to commit for five years. I'm just saying to you, every budget, we're going to keep the same $15,000 in it once you give it to us. And we're going to do everything we can on the $15,000 relative to linear footage. Now, one of the great things or benefits down there is that all the substructure, for all practical purposes, is still very valid. It's simply the boardwalk and the handrails. And I'm going to tell you, $15,000 is not going to be used replacing one board here and one board there. We're talking about taking full sections and taking them all out and to spread the money or to make the money go as far as possible, the vast majority of this work will be done by city crews, not hiring somebody out. Because if you hire them out, I think Mr. Warden would be agreeable that about half that money would go into product and half that money would go into labor.
Richard, I have a question. Would it be worthwhile to look at, since this is something that's going to be around for a long time, is it worthwhile to look at investing in, in a different material like Trex? I know obviously it's a little bit costlier upfront, but you're done. It's not going to warp, it's not going to deteriorate. You know, when you talk about longevity and getting your cost benefit analysis.
We're going to look at all of that. We're also going to look at a technique that we used in the private sector in Florida and that's not using this board, which is basically a two-by-eight, but using a three-by material so that at a certain age, you can simply unscrew them and flip them over. We're going to look at a number of techniques, but the bottom line is, we've got to have money.
Yeah.
So. We do have, that's everything for the budget this evening. We do have some one-city moments that I would like to ask you to endure for just a moment more.
Always, but including pizza.
Jacksonville Jamboree. If you, if you were there on Saturday, you were there with a whole lot of people. It was a great day, it was a great outing. You know, this is one of the three events that you as a council have authorized us to provide to the public free. The National Night Out is coming up, Chief, what day?
August.
August.
First weekend, August.
Okay, first weekend, August. And then, of course, we have the Winter Fest in December. But you can see a lot of happy people. While the food was not free, everything else was. And this is a great one-city moment that shows that our city truly is one city. We get together, we know how to have, have respect and civility and a great time, you know, working together.
Richard, when was the first time we did it? I remember the first.
I believe this is the fifth.
I remember the fifth year.
The fifth year.
Did, do we have a crowd estimate from our drone?
No, sir, we don't.
I'd always raise the flag over crowds.
That's right.
Do we have a, do we have an estimate?
Well.
I know we always ask, yeah, just curious.
Let's put it this way. The estimates range, but the one that I'm willing to accept is about 6,000 people. Now, Susan and her staff said there were over 300,000 people there. But the police department and media are saying closer to six, maybe 7,000 people. A lot of happy, happy faces. The next thing we'd like to highlight from a one-city moment is the Naval Hospital, the 75th anniversary. Councilmember Washington represented the city at the observance. She presented and read a proclamation on behalf of the city and guess what? She had all of her high school class out there, too. And I think they had a good time, didn't they, Ms. Washington? Quite a ceremony. You know, when you look back at the Naval Hospital, I believe it was originally called the Naval Medical Center Camp. Naval Medical Center wasn't actually a hospital. And if you've been out there, which I know most of you have, it is a full hospital. And you can see there some of the hospital staff cutting that great big cake. I am told that Ms. Washington did not eat a single piece of that cake. But again, a great, great community event and it brings us a lot of benefit to have the Naval Hospital. Then the last moment that we would like to have is the National Day of Prayer. Councilmember Warden presented the proclamation and represented the city at this. It occurred down at the Bayou Memorial. It has been in other locations, but as the size has continued to grow, the venue needed to expand and we're very pleased that we continue to have this activity in our community. So there's Mr. Warden reading the proclamation. Two last things that we would, would like to, to mention. Most of you are aware that Detective Ramirez in our police department solved a very complicated serial rapist case. That brought the attention to 48 Hours, the CBS television show. We'll send you a notice of reminder, but on Tuesday night, May 22, at 10:30 PM, there will be the airing of the CBS case, CBS 48-hour case, and you will hear Detective Ramirez and others talk about how this case was, was solved. And with that, that concludes all of the items I have, except one other thing. Mike, your police officer memorial service is when?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 15th at, at 10 o'clock and that's at the new location, they're on chain. We really appreciate everybody staying with us this evening. Look forward to more budget discussions on Tuesday of next week.
Richard, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Section.
All in favor? Thank you.